Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order at seven four, seven oh four P M. Need a motion and a second?
I'll wait, I'll say.
Okay, motion by Bill, second by Hawk. Thank you. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Annie, would you lead us in the pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jocelyn, you rolled up, huh? We're sure you made dinner and then sent ahead the table, right?
Okay, need a motion for the approval of the board meeting agenda?
No motion.
Annie, second?
Second.
Second by Flo, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, we're gonna start the evening with some presentations. We have our student board reps, Molly Koenig and Jocelyn. Well, actually just Jocelyn Decker tonight. Jocelyn?
Good evening, everybody. My name's Jocelyn Decker and I'm the junior representative. Before I begin, I would like to thank the board for the opportunity to serve. Report cards were distributed to the high school and middle school on Friday, yeah, Friday, February third. Some important senior deadline reminders. On tomorrow, February seventeenth, senior quotes are due for the yearbook. On February twenty-fourth, senior derivatives are due for the yearbook, and on March first, the cap and gown payments are due. Our running graders took part in the section nine championships Friday night at West Point. The girls two hundred relay of Roberts, Delilah Allen, Census and Russell finished third place. T J Fergus took second in the fifty-five hurdles and triple jump. Constantino Prosha placed first in the long jump and high jump. And check out our announcements for the high school for many more details and standings. Our Portervis wrestlers, Maddox McCormick, Charlie Wiley, Richard Orlina and Matthew Ostrom competed in sectional Sunday. They all won wrestling titles in their respective weight classes and they will advance to their state tournament on February twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth in Albany. Congratulations to the Portervis High School senior Eli Baumgartner, who earned the first place medal in carpentry at Orange County. Olster Bosie's notion. They held their regional skills USA competition where the opportunity to move on to the next level of competition. The science Olympia Mid Hudson Regional Competition was recently held. The team consists of Delilah Maung, Sheng Zhou, Constantino Prosha and Zhang Zhou. They competed in events such as cell biology, green generation, experimental design, forming questions and rocks mineral. This past Saturday, the Orange County Arts Council hosted the Arts Build Confidence Showcase at the General Mall in Middletown. The exhibit featured students from all of the Orange County high schools. Portervis was represented by both middle and high school students. Senior Koi Raymond won first place in the high school division. She'll be attending SUNY Purchase this fall. The class of twenty twenty-four is preparing decorations for the upcoming semi-normal dinner and dance on March sixteenth. Congratulations to Casey Stankunas and the E S F Research Experience. They presented, if you guys remember, in October. Their field research site was selected to continue with their studies again this year. The course is designed to give students hands-on experience with data collection and fieldwork while contributing to long-term research monitoring for succession and the effects of Emerald Ash Gore at the brand new nature learning reserve. Mrs. Stankunas will be back here to share with the board in late August for the project overview. The Bex Robotics team also received some helpful news and awaiting details on moving forward to the next level of competition. We'll celebrate the boys' senior basketball players and the cheerleaders tomorrow at the game for the high school. The boys varsity basketball team is in upcoming playoffs and it's the first time since two thousand and seventeen. More information on dates and location are to come. And last but not least, our academic studies support and enrichment is still underway each afternoon for those who want to stay for extra. Thank you.
Thank you, Jocelyn. A lot of great things going on there. Thank you for that. Next up, presentations, we have a presentation from Mr. Lozaro and Mr. Marata. Building presentations. So first up, I guess we'll do Mr. Lozaro for the high school.
Actually, we're gonna be doing this as a collective.
Even better. This sounds really entertaining.
If nothing else, so I just have to cast to the screen. Please ignore my tabs.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to come together and to share our seven through twelve secondary snapshot. Our goals tonight are to share and highlight and identify where we were, where we've been and where we're going. Aligned with our elementary colleagues, we are going to highlight our implementation of our MTSS system, our PBIS and our character education programs, our adaptation of collective efficacy. And being strong components of SEL, we think it's important to reflect on where we were when we began hearing rumors that both seventh and eighth graders would be joining us here on the two oh nine complex. If we had a mood meter going on that warm July day, it would look a bit like this. Once the initial shock wore off, Dr. Bell and his team assembled a meeting with all of the administrators and charged us with, figure it out and let us know what you need. We appreciated the district's confidence in us and began working on it that day. It was truly a district collaboration as all four buildings were affected and involved. We reviewed everything that needed to be done, and even though H B wasn't here, they still helped us plan all of these things here on our complex. And although I see Mr. Cancreed is not here, I do have to say, it was the first time in ten years that we called Mr. Cancreed and said, we need a room, and he didn't say, absolutely not. When September rolls around, we were well, we were ready to welcome all of our secondary students here on the two oh nine, this side of the two oh nine complex. But it was truly our staff and our students who were the rock star all-stars to put all of those plans into motion. When something didn't go as planned and needed a revision, they rose to the occasion and continue to do so. It was amazing to watch all of the transitions take place, and we brought along some of those all-stars to share their experiences.
Thank you, Ms. Nylund. Our first student speaker is Victoria Cross. Victoria is a seventh grader with us. She is our treasurer of the student council. Her twin sister is here also. Samantha and her mom Lydia is here, and we will hear from Victoria again about her experience here at the middle.
Excuse me, Mr. Mar.
Well, hello, Mrs. Nylund. I know how much you like the mic.
I thought signor had it.
All right, we'll try that again for the people at home. Here we go.
Hello, I'm Victoria Cross and I'm the seventh grade representative. So in the beginning of the school year, I didn't really know what to expect. I'd never been to the old middle school, and me and my twin sister were kind of excited and scared at the same time because we didn't know what was gonna happen. Like now, I'm really liking the middle school year. I like changing classes and having different teachers and all the activities that we could do. My sister plays basketball and I'm involved in drama and cooking club. The downside is that the hallways can be crowded at times. Moving forward, I'm looking forward to my eighth grade year, a new role in the drama club, sports like soccer and basketball, and getting to honor advanced classes.
Thank you, Victoria. Unfortunately, Cameron cannot be here. He's our eighth grade student and he was ill today. But he wrote that he liked the old middle school. It wasn't as crowded and we had our own space. Everything was kind of right there. But now in eighth grade, it is cool that we get a sneak peek at high school, the high school building and the flow of the day. I've gotten used to everything since September and we've settled in. So many staff, including teachers from A S K and the high school are around. Even though I went to H B, I've gotten to know them. And I'm glad that spring track, I can just walk right out to the track and not have to get on a bus or walk here. And for next year, where are we going? I'm looking forward to high school. It'll be a nice time to be near my middle school teachers and friends, but I know there'll be new opportunities and new challenges. I'm ready for both. I would like to intend C tech in the future and explore some of the options there. On behalf of Victoria and Ken and all of our middle school staff here, I do wanna thank everyone. Victoria, I'm gonna end the middle school message.
Go for it.
Good evening. I hope you are all doing well. My name is Troy Roberts and currently a sophomore at Portervis High School. But not only am I just a student, I am involved in many extracurricular activities such as band, indoor and outdoor track, cross-country, and clubs like the Youth Coalition and the Equals Movement, which I will be highlighting today.
Hi, good evening. My name's Delaina Maung. I'm a senior. I transferred my junior year from Providence, Rhode Island. I'm a national, I'm a member of the National Honor Society, which has given me the opportunity to be really involved in my community, highlighting one of my favorite trips, Honor Flight. It was really fun. I'm a part of the DECA school store and I recently participated in the science Olympia competition. Okay, being that the middle school has joined us this year has been really surprising. We all thought it was gonna be chaotic and a lot of weightness, crowding, and a lot of altercations, but it seems to be pretty, going pretty smoothly.
Yes, so even though the first week was a little stressful and a little crowded, everything was more content once we all got settled in and things got going. And if I'm being honest, this combination overall benefited our interests, and we've got some club collaborations in helping out with the DECA school store profits.
As a school store, um, runner employee, I guess, even though I don't get paid. Um, the middle schools have been our number one customers, which has been really nice for them to see what the school store is all about. And they have something to look forward to or, you know, see how high school, you gain those leadership opportunities.
So, to start off, in the middle school year twenty twenty-one, with the assistance of Mr. Lozaro and Ms. Hargit, the Equals Movement was first created. And I am glad and I am proud to share that it has been brought up in the high school where we have accomplished a number of things. One thing I would like to share today is at the middle school collaboration for Black History Month. And as you can see, we've created these lovely posters to appreciate and honor and tribute black heritage. These posters have been placed among the school windows for the middle school hall and the high school hall. And I would like to thank Mr. Wilson for helping arrange that. Thank you.
Okay, next, I'm gonna be talking about positive reinforcement this year, learning targets, our classroom experience. Um, the learning targets, uh, you can see what it looks like. It's, it's an I can statement. It helps us prepare our thinking for the class, and I noticed that it makes students feel more comfortable to ask questions and kind of be interactive with one another and the teacher on what we're learning. Shout outs to Ms. Dory. Her class is like my friend's class, even though it's first period and it's so early in the morning. Um, yeah, uh, Mr. Trotter does the same. Even though I take a college biology class with him, it's easy to know what we're gonna do in class and what we would have to finish for homework. Thank you.
Uh, how's everybody doing? Everybody's doing good. I'm Jada Rivera, currently a senior at the high school. Um, sorry, I don't understand. Okay, so I'm a transfer from my sophomore year. I came from the Bronx down a Catholic school, a Hollis High School. And when I first transferred up here, it was very hectic. I wasn't really used to all this. So, um, moving forward, uh, when the middle school first arrived, I was very, I was confused. And I was like, okay, this is gonna be really like hectic and chaotic and very stressful. We went through the hallways trying not to bump into kids, but everybody here made it work, including Lozaro, very organized. Last year in September, I went through a little mental thing, but it opened my eyes to something. And I wanted to create a program for the kids who have disabilities mentally and ended up becoming middle school mental. Um, it originated because I have three brothers with autism. And growing up and watching them become the people they are today really like transformed me into a better man. Um, aside from that, I also like helping out the kids with students back there. She, uh, she showed me how these kids are really special and, uh, you know, as you can see that picture right there, taking on my birthday. Um, I walked right into that classroom and everybody screaming, I love you and handing me cards. So it really felt good. Um, currently, as of right now, I am hoping with them in tech class, which actually switched to world culture with Mr. Wilson. And it's a pretty, you know, it can get challenging at times because sometimes I don't know how these kids respond to different challenges, but you know, when you have the patience, because I came from, you know, I helped my brothers out, so getting that patience and helping them go through it feels really good to feel accomplished. Moving forward, like I said, I am a senior, so this is my last year and I do wanna have this program stay here till after I'm gone. You know, kids can actually have their passport for good up and put volunteer hours in and being able to make a difference is just really what I wanted to do. Thank you for having me.
Hi, everybody. My name is Dave Mar. If you don't know who I am, I'm one of the assistant principals at the high school. And next to me is Mrs. Cook. She's one of the, or she is the assistant principal at the middle school. I wanna start by thanking the students that came here tonight because it really is great that they get to tell you their experience. It's one thing for us to come up here and tell you how things have been. To say these students have made the most of it really isn't doing it justice. They're taking every opportunity that we're affording them and really just, they're not surviving, Mr. Mar. They're doing something else. I don't know what it is. So, uh, what I do wanna talk to you about today is MTSS. And as a refresher, it stands for multi-tier, multi-tier system of supports. And the best way to think of it is like educational triage. We get to sit down as a building level team with the student as part of the process, and we get to make decisions about interventions and adaptations to the educational environment so that we can best support that student academically, behaviorally, socially, emotionally. And what's been great this year is that we've been able to meet as a district level team monthly and really align the things that we're doing so that everything is kind of uniform. The plan for next year, really the benefit for us, has been that the middle school has been so close. So we get to spend all this time, not just aligning, but we keep our interventions and adaptations going continuously, not just across the buildings, but across years and through the district. So that's been a real benefit to us this year. Oh, this is, uh, this is just a sample of one of the flow charts that we use. I think this is the middle school's. This is the middle school's flow chart. Each building has its own Google classroom where we house data documents and the different, the different forms that we use. And it's great because all the teachers, it's getting all the teachers on the same page so that everyone can see the same thing.
So before I talk about PBIS, I just wanna also, you know, kind of mirror what Dave said. You know, thank you to our students. It is amazing to hear from them. This really has been, um, nothing short of an amazing transition. And really, um, we've been just seven through twelve, I feel like, collaborating from day one. When Heidi put up the picture of how we felt like, if I knew how to make myself cry, that would have been the picture. I just can't do that on command. Because when we first heard about this, we just didn't know how it was gonna work, but it's really been beneficial. Um, learning a lot, working together, seeing what the kids are willing to do. They wanna collaborate. They wanna work together. It's been amazing. Um, so to talk about MTSS, one of the things that we've done is that we meet as a building every five weeks to talk about kids. Um, but then we've also been doing district-wide meetings led by Dr. Walkowitz that we met like once a month. Over the summer, one of the things that we talked about is that we wanted to create a PBIS program, so a positive behavior intervention support. Um, K twelve, which is awesome. So our students from kindergarten through twelve grade are now hearing the same message. You can see we have the Port Pride Five up there. Be your best to be kind, be honest, be responsible, be respectful, be involved. There's a little bit of debate about what the five should be, but we all, you know, worked it out over time. And these are the five that we came up with. And again, our students are hearing a consistent message. Why this came through MTSS is because when we, when we do MTSS, it's broken up into tiers. So tier one is something that all of our students are given. And we look at tier one things academically, socially, emotionally and behaviorally. So when we're talking about something that all of our students can get behaviorally, this is the consistent message that they hear. Um, so we've held PBIS assemblies. The high school does their raider readiness where we talk to the kids about, how are you gonna be kind in the classroom? How are you being kind in the hallway or being responsible in the cafeteria? And we go through this and constantly build that language in with them. One of the, I think the most awesome thing that came out of this so far is that, um, we started giving positive referrals in school tool. So most of the time, when you call a kid in and they have a referral, it's like dreadful, right? Now we call a kid in, the kids still get scared. If I, they're coming to my office. I had a girl yesterday who was coming down for a positive referral and I was like, I should have told the teacher to tell her on the way out. She's not scared. She looked like she was gonna faint on the spot. I'm like, you're not in trouble. I just said it for her. You're not in trouble. But she had a positive referral. Um, and initially these came out as just positive referrals, but over time, secondary put together that, let's have them align to our Port Pride Five. So now teachers and staff can give a positive referral for students that are responsible, that are respectful, that are involved. Let's see if I can work with that. No, no, there we go. So here's some examples. We took the names out. Um, I won't read them to you, but just some examples of being involved and being responsible, different things that students got. In the middle school, when we put together the slideshow, there was like a hundred and thirty-seven positive referrals that have come out. There's more since then. I mean, they're, they're backed up in there, which is just amazing. The kids get called down. Um, we have like a basket of stickers, kind of like if you're at the doctor or dentist, you can pick your own. Most kids are picking the Port Pride stickers. I have to give that to Andrew, even though we all wanted to have all different ones. The kids love the Port Pride stickers, which is great, which he said, so that's all him. Um, but yeah, so, and they love it. We call home, we tell the parents and we just kind of celebrate them. Uh, I was even saying it's awesome to some days. I'll get a kid that, like third period, a referral, a negative referral kind of pops through and then like sixth period, a positive one. I'm like, that kid's trying to even himself out. And when they come out, I kind of am like, you evened yourself out. So we're gonna just, you know, call, call it even on that. But it, it's been amazing. Um, where we see this going with PBIS is being able to take these positive referrals and then offer other types of incentives. So is it that you get a free ticket into the dance when you get this? Can we work something out with Vince Fresh where, you know what I mean, the kids can go down and get a treat because they got a certain number of positive referrals? And just kind of keep this momentum going with it. So. We good? All right. So that's for MTSS and PBIS. Um, at this time, I wanna introduce Mr. Wilson and Mrs. Grismer, and they are going to talk to you about the Character Ed Program that's also been a seven through twelve initiative.
Yes, hello. Thanks for having us tonight. I'm Jen Grismer, um, the co-coordinator of the Character Education Program at the high school. And Austin Wilson is the coordinator at the middle school. And as was said, we have worked really hard to align our programs and it's been a great collaboration. But just to give you a little information about what, what it's all about, the goal is to teach kids the core values that we all need to function successfully and thrive and work together as a community as a whole. Each month, our character education program focuses on a specific character trait. We challenge students and staff to wear a specific color that's associated with that trait. We create opportunities for students and staff to learn about the character traits and how they can, you know, display those in their day-to-day lives. And we reward staff and students who are exhibiting the traits.
So although we are aligning everything, it's gonna look slightly different in the middle school versus the high school. So we have the same character traits, uh, the same month, we have the same colors, uh, but our process is slightly different in the middle school. So this is what I do to prepare, um, for the month. So I create a little flyer that is posted in the Google classroom for the students and the staff so they could read about what each character trait is, uh, maybe how to implement it, some quotes, things like that. Additionally, I created these little, uh, signs. It says mindfulness that I put in every classroom and it's in the same spot. So every kid knows wherever you are, you can always look in the same direction and you can find that character trait. Um, additionally, since we don't have bulletin board space, I got a little creative and now I'm designing windows. So every month I design a new window, um, and that showcases the character trait for that month. And during this month, staff are, they nominate students who display these traits throughout school, whether it's in the classroom, uh, during an extracurricular activity. And we have little assemblies either attached with PBIS or in the cafeteria. This is my favorite part. I get in the cafeteria or in the auditorium, I hype up the kids, I announce the kids, but they're so supportive and they cheer each other on. And that's the best part to see them just forgetting, forgetting about the drama that's existing and they just focus on this. And it's the most amazing thing, uh, every month. So I'm super excited to do that. Then they get a color-coded certificate. We take a picture in front of the window and they get rewards, whether it's a free ticket to the dance or free items throughout the middle school school store. Um, in the beginning, we had an initiative called Positive Sign Wednesday. So I'd go into the cafeteria and we'd have a photo frame and a positive message and it allowed for really great conversations revolving around the character traits. So this is just some of the students during their lunchtimes.
Our process at the high school is, is very similar. You will notice we have our theme this year is building character. And so we, we chose that on purpose to tie into, um, the building that's going on around, um, the district. Um, we create flyers every month that are placed around the school with information about the trait, the color, you know, what it means. Those flyers are posted, um, not only hung around the school, but posted in the grade level guidance Google classrooms for all the students to see. Uh, we continue to build our, um, our bulletin board, which is right by the front entrance in the main hallway. Our flyers are all posted there. Names get added every month as we have students that are nominated. Um, trait-specific educational programming is done with the students about the specific traits. And a monthly resource guide is given to the staff with educational material and educational classroom activities that they can use in their rooms. Um, staff and students are also nominated by one another using a Google form. We use in the high school a prize patrol. So every month we take the list of students who have been nominated and they are recognized in their classroom. The prize patrol pops into the classroom and recognizes them and presents them with a school store certificate, which has been a great collaboration, um, with DECA, the school store, to give them a two dollar certificate toward anything that they want. And we will also plan an end of the year character education celebration where the students will all come together as a, as a group, be recognized, and they'll be given a certificate with, uh, details of their nomination. These are just some pictures of staff, students wearing the particular color associated with the character trait each month.
And then in November, um, we happen to do some activities in November, different activities, but it was interesting that we both picked November to do them in. Uh, in the middle In the middle school, we focus on kindness, so we had a kindness week. On the left of the screen, you're going to see some flyers that we had created through Digital Marketing Club. So they were able to form these. They learned how to use Canva. It's a really cool club. And then we shared them around the school and in Google Classroom. The students signed a pledge, which you can see right over there, all the students signed their names. And then we had a challenge each day of that week for students. It was really awesome. And in the middle, you're going to see the coffee cart that Mrs. Dillon runs with her students, and they deliver coffee. And students actually designed little sleeves for each coffee cup with positive messages for each chef member that got a coffee that day.
Yeah, so in November, the character trait was gratitude. And we had students sign specific cards for our posters for the helpers around the district: bus drivers, monitors, secretaries, our nurse, custodians, cafeteria staff, and the school officers. So wrapping up, going forward, we're focusing on the three Cs: community. And this is definitely a community. We want to continue to work together in collaboration. And character cash at the high school. Thank you to, we're bringing in some of the clubs in the school to help support our Character Ed Program. So for example, the Port Jervis Youth Coalition this month created a bulletin board on respect, and they're holding a respect challenge contest. DECA, we want to thank them. They've been fabulous working with us to provide those school store certificates. The Equals Movement worked with us this past month also to do something on respect. They put together an educational video that was shared out through the whole high school for everyone to see. And going forward, we want to, again, thank the Port Jervis Education Foundation, who gave us a grant. And we are going to be coming up with character cash, which is a way for us, more ways for us to incentivize displaying good character.
I also want to thank you guys at the high school for being so willing to share everything with me because we really redesigned character to the middle school this year so it can be aligned. So I appreciate that. But also, all these happen students, they were so on board and they're buying in. And it's so nice to see them participating each week, wearing the colors, earning their treats, but also having these natural conversations about the character traits and ultimately displaying. So it's been a really great time. So thank you.
All right. So good evening. I'm the principal of the high school. So I got to tell you, every time I come up here and do these things, I feel my heart pounding, right? I'm trying to decide why is it pounding tonight? And part of it is it comes down to like how I'm so proud to be part of this team. And I think about what John Bell, Dr. Bell said regarding, you know, we have this heavy lift before us entering the school year. And if we get through this, there's nothing we won't be able to do collectively. And really, that kind of promoted the mindset of collective advocacy in what we do. Because everything you saw here tonight was based on our team efforts. And just to go back for a while, I'm going to share some data with you. But before we do that, we talked about what happened during the summer, the work that was done, the MTSS. One thing we did during those meetings was look hard at our data, decide what's the biggest way to make improvements in our building. And when we looked that hard, we realized, look at all the cut classes, look at that discipline, look how that's impacting our instruction. What does that mean? What can we do? So we sat down and we decided, hey, last year, we piloted this thing that I made up. It was a Google sheet. It was not good. But we collected data on hall passes. One of our team, Emerson Cigara, was able to get us e-hall pass. At first, we weren't sure how it's going to work, but it's been tremendous because it tracks all moving in our building, right? Where kids are going, how long they're out, who's out with who. It allows us to really monitor that piece. We also had a conversation with our teachers and increased our hallway presence with our teachers. So through those efforts, and Ms. Cook also answered those community meetings. We have monthly meetings with our students in the auditorium, just having conversations with them, reminding them that we are a community. And the PBIS piece that we talked about, those positive behavior referrals. What it yielded was, so first semester results, we had 65% reduction in cut classes. So from year to year, when we compare last year's first semester to this year, that's a 65% cut of cut classes. Also, last year, we had something called ice room, which is a timeout room, completely antithetical to what we're trying to do. We eliminated that. So you would think that you would have an increase in discipline if you took away ice room, right? But that wasn't the case. Instead, we had no ice room and a 47% reduction in overall referrals. So now we have this improvement in exposure to our instructional time. And with that, we also had 210 positive referrals in that first semester as well. We have no data on that for last year because we weren't doing yet. But again, we're seeing this positive turnaround. I know I mean was talking about kids trying to break even, like that karma effect, like I did something wrong when I set the universe right. The other side of that is what positive referrals also do for the adults, right? We so often are looking to identify things that are wrong with the world, right? We're programmed for that. That's how the brain works. If we ask people to look for positive referrals, really what it does is it changes our perspective, our lens. We start looking for what is right with the world. Because our students do awesome things every day. You can see, you saw four of them, four and a half. And you saw what they accomplished, right? So again, it's changing our lens, and that changed the culture, right? So again, that contributes that 47% reduction in referrals. And we do see that break-even effect. I got to set the world right. I was just happy about that. So I threw that hour, and I was excited to make that work. Thank you. It was good. All right. So the next part, so now students are in the classroom. So what does that mean? How does that affect their instruction? So our conversation has been around the use of learning targets. You heard the lady, Ms. Mom, speak to that earlier. And it is just that, right? So our students, our teachers, right, our baseline data was the 62%. We saw that happening across the building. I will tell you that learning targets are probably one of the biggest bang for the buck educationally. Like, it's a simple thing you do, but it changes the structure of the classroom. Right now, we're seeing 75%. We're going to hit 100% learning targets. That has to happen across our building. It's a consistent language of I can, right? Language is the foundation of culture. So if we're building a culture around learning, the I can statement becomes our culture. And again, thank you, Dr. Walkowitz, for the curriculum work and alignment that we've been doing because that's helping with our scope and sequence. And again, that's completely enabled our secondary to making sure that we are moving students in a way that's progressive and challenging. So student achievement, right now, we, first, second quarter, rather, we had 432 students make high honor roll, honor roll, rather, and 229 of those were high honor roll. And we have the middle school at over half their building, roughly 70%. 70% of the students had made honor roll, and you see the number 135 made high honor roll. And again, I was excited about that, I don't know. So student engagement, we're super proud about what's happening in our classrooms. We think about what happened last year. We had masks on, still kind of like fumbling through the year. Teachers had, came in head-on. That young man holding balloons there is excited because they were doing a Stranger Things, a Stranger Things contest in business math. So again, it was this web quest, engagement, learning targets on the board, students stressed up, and the Salem Miss Trials Crucible, right, off the note. So great opportunity for our students working together and collaborating. Again, that's part of that collective advocacy we're talking about. New opportunities. So we have, I'm getting old, so you can't read that far. So we have six new clubs in the past year. So I'll go through them quickly because I was excited. We heard Ms. Roberts talk about the Equals Movement. That's been a tremendous thing that we've carried from the middle school into this building. We have the stock market game. Middle school, right, had been in the middle school, now in our building. Walter Kaufman, we were able to tap into his skill set from the middle school and transfer that into our building. We have the step dance club. So that was super exciting. Some kids approached us. We like to do step dance. They formed a club. Ms. Byrne, Ms. Murphy jumped on board, and they are performing at the halftime of our basketball games. We have esports. That is a product of Ms. Lane and Mr. Felix, who have a gaming club that now has extended, and we're moving into esports. And we're finding that Mr. Cigara is also supporting that, right? Did I miss something you said further? So you said that on TV. So all those positive. Boys' basketball. That's not boys' basketball. I'm talking volleyball. Similar, different. But again, brand new this year. And what I'm super excited about, so I spoke to Ms. Wining the other day. We had this great conversation about, we met with the chiefs, Chief Warden, and we were talking about how can we bridge the gap in our community? I said, I have a person who I think can work with you. And if Ms. Wining stepped up, and she's going to be heading up a community service partnership program where twice a month, we'll bring in EMT, ambulance, fire department. She's going to go first in and talk about career opportunities in that service industry, right? Which is a good thing. Actually, what I'm thinking about right now, I apologize, I'm not going to go too far off the cuff, but I was thinking about the volunteer fair and volunteerism and all the things we're not covering tonight. I was hoping to miss that right before this and saying, wow, we're just scraping this. We're going to go over our time. I know we are. But, you know, we wanted to share all the things that are happening across the board. So my final slide, I promise that I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Marana. College enrollment. So right now, currently, this is our stats, right? We have 32% of our seniors, 28% of our juniors participating in some form in our 11-course offerings. Now, this is what we're looking toward, what's to come, right? We're looking to expand those offerings across secondary. What that means is happening at the seventh and eighth grade level. We're looking at what type of honors programs can we provide? That is also because we can tap into the skill set of the middle school and expand our offerings, right? Because right now, we're looking at, I want to say somewhere 25, 30 new electives, including college courses for next year, because we can tap into that middle school. And because of honestly the support of the board and all the things you've allowed us to do, we're going to have more high school electives. But what I'm really excited about is the additional college offerings. 11 college offerings we need to expand upon. So one thing we're looking at right now are several colleges. I'll get to Project Lead the Way. I'm sorry. But these are the colleges we're looking at right now. And as far as the college courses, we're at 11 right now. There's no reason why we can't hit six, seven more. So we're looking at 50% increase in college courses to roughly 18. And those are the colleges we've been working with. Dr. Walkowitz is really connected with Mount St. Mary. I reached out to SUNY S-Alph with the help of Casey Stankounis. And SUNY Vol is going to help fill some gaps while we still have that relationship with SUNY Orange. So Project Lead the Way, though, that's a K through E program right now, but that's going to start trickling into the high school in that next year. But the following year, we're going to have opportunity to work with RIT so to bring additional college courses into the program. So I know I speak fast. I'm from the city, but I wanted to make sure I stayed within the time for you. So guys, thank you so much. I'm going to turn it over to the principal of the middle school, Mr. Andrew Maron.
Is there a course in time management? Because we were supposed to be at 23 minutes, and we're at 36. Now, this is great, right? And you're seeing the collaboration, the collaboration with the adults, the kids. The kids did a great job tonight. Really well done. One more round of applause for our students tonight. There's been a lot of organic experiences that have happened that nobody kind of counted on, right? You look at some of those things up there. We took that picture the other day. That's the nurses, right? Everyone was crowded together. And like Anthony said, there was a negative aspect. They've actually asked if they can stay together because they found a collaboration that works. The families are connected. They're helping each other. There's no lunch. Somebody's absent. They cover. And so many organic things that have happened. The adults, right, our middle school being here, they mentioned it countless times tonight, just the collaboration, and it's been great. There's Mr. Lozaro and I reviewing the presentation the other day, right? We're in the cafeteria. We're on cafeteria duty. My former students, his students were there. And what happens, right? Hey, can we be in the picture? And it was just an organic experience, like so many of these things. So it was nice to share that. I'm certainly proud of the work that middle school is doing. We are the ones who moved here, and our staff has really adjusted. The kids are great, so a shout out to our staff there. All of this is Port Pride in action. We're proud to be here. We're proud to lead this movement. And we're glad there's a brand-new building coming one day. So that wraps us up for tonight. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll have more to say during Board Member comments, but on behalf of the board, thank you to all of the staff and students who presented tonight. Next up, we have public comment, and we do have one person signed up for public comment, Connie Markle. And it's just, as you make your way up, just a couple reminders about public comments. Speakers must restrict their comments to no more than five minutes. Speakers may not discuss in public comments certain topics such as, for example, employees or students, health or medical issues, discipline, hiring or firing of an individual, labor negotiations, or litigation. Jason, would you be able to keep time? Ms. Markle?
Hi. So thank you for letting me speak and for your time. And let me just say, I thought they did a great job, middle school and high school, secondary. And bottom line, they're proactive, right? Everything they were talking about, they're being proactive. In this district, we want to be proactive. So I'm sure everybody knows about the six-year-olds who shot the teacher in Virginia, right? We all know about that. But the worst part about that, the teacher had gone to admin multiple times, multiple times. Multiple teachers went to admin and said, we have a problem. And I'm not saying that would happen here, but I'm just saying, let's look at what happened. So my question is, do our teachers feel safe? Bottom line, do our teachers from elementary to high school, do they feel safe? Because right now, they are working like dogs to try to catch up on the academic loss that everybody took. Everybody took. It's a reality. So to ask them to catch those kids up academically and also deal with their social, emotional issues that are off the charts, it's a lot. And I know I came and spoke before the board a year ago saying, we need counselors. We need more for these kids. They have been traumatized. We took care of their medical needs, their physical needs during COVID, but we did not take care of their emotional and social. They are suffering. I'm seeing it across the board, and I don't even work in school. So in New Jersey, there was a 14-year-old who was beaten up in the halls and then killed herself, right? We know about that one, too. I know my son goes to middle school, and as much as they're trying their best, there's fights daily. I know there's times he's come home to me in tears because he's afraid. As a parent, it's killing me, right? And I'm just like, we got to get through it. We're going to get through it. It's going to be great. But that's not how it should be. He should love school as much as everybody should love school. So my question is, when these fights are happening, all that's happening, is everybody trained in the building for handle with care or TCI or something? Is every single employee of this district ready to jump in, keep the kids safe, and keep them safe? Do they know how to de-escalate? Because a lot of the handle with care and TCI is de-escalation. So I'm just asking, are we being proactive? Are we supporting our teachers? Are we supporting our admin? When they come and say, hey, we have a problem. We need help. Are we supporting that? Because to have a tragedy that's been happening across the world happen here would just be unbearable. And I know that you guys do a great job, and I know that you want the best for the community and the school. So I just want to make us aware. And just to think for a minute, do our teachers, does our staff feel safe doing their jobs every day? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Markle. Next up, we have administrative reports, and we'll start with Superintendent Dr. Bell.
Thank you. I have seven things to mention tonight for the audience, both here and at home. The first thing is we've kicked off the recruiting season for new teachers for next year already, believe it or not. It's very important to get out there and get our act together, get organized, do our assessment of every opening, which ones do we need to fill, which ones do we not need to fill? Are we going to transfer a position that's open in this department, we went to another department, or we have a greater need? We have done all that. We now have put the net out there for all the things that we're looking for in terms of new teachers. And now we'll start to recruit things, going through the colleges. We're emailing everybody after the sun to get the word out. So please check out our website if you haven't seen it already for the list of positions and spread the word to anybody you might know who would be a top-notch candidate so that we can get them to even say it here at Port Jervis. Everybody spreading the word helps a ton, so we appreciate that. Secondly, just a reminder, February break is next week. We're off the entire week. Some people still are not used to having a week off in February, so I just wanted to remind everyone of that. This week, I also had the pleasure of going around meeting with our superintendent advisory council, which is our students in all four schools, that meet with me on a quarterly basis, to talk about what's good about school, what's bad about school, what do you wish we had in school, what would we delete? And we had a great conversation in HBE today, and they were giving me all these great things and things. Come on, there's got to be something. There's got to be something. Then eventually, they complained about a basta or about some kind of lasagna roll or something. So we took those notes, and we'll make sure our new food service director gets those notes. In fact, I'm going to ask her to come to me in the spring and to do the four-school visits and talk about the things they like and don't like. And she's got a lot planned that I think the kids will like. But it's really fun for me to get to spend 45 minutes with the kids regularly basis and talk about all the things, the things we're trying to plan for the future, and to see their eyes get really big when they hear about middle school honors courses that are coming, or they hear about improvements we want to do in the capital project that's going to go through the voting today. It's neat to see the kids get excited because it's their future. Leaving money in the bank doesn't help kids. Using that money to do stuff for kids is what I'm talking about. The next thing I also want to remind everybody, too, is that on the agenda tonight is the school calendar for next year. Everybody always asks if they want to plan their vacations for next year. Everybody always asks if they want to plan their vacations for next year, so the board will be approving the calendar later tonight. And it's very similar to this year, except we have one really cool perk. Most of the Orange County schools are having the teachers come back the Friday before Labor Day, and our teachers aren't going to have to come back till the Tuesday after Labor Day. So that'll be a good thing. We can tease all our friends in the other districts in the county about that. I mentioned about the capital project. We're still working at the next, but at the next meeting on the fourteenth of March, Scott Dooler, our architect, will be here to talk about all the items that will be in what we call Phase Three, which is our next capital project. We have a lot of things that we're working on. Even though we're still in Phase One and we haven't started Phase Two, we're ready to go to the voters, we have Phase Three. And then, as you know, then everything goes to state ed for approvals, and that takes a while. So you constantly have to keep the ball moving with Phase One, Phase Two, and planning Phase Three. Eventually, if I live long enough, it'll be a Phase Four, maybe, I don't know. John Tim might kill me, though. Is that right?
It's like the one.
Every day, I got another idea. We're really not very good here. We've got to improve this. So he just wants us to solidify Phase Three, so I don't add any more things to the list. Also on the agenda tonight are four more retirees, and I just wanted to take a minute. I think last week, last month when I ran the meeting, it was Judy Dawson, and Nancy Northrup, and Donna Shuts, who are from HBE, NSK, and the middle school, respectively. And I'm Ed Davenport, who's an administrative in athletics and transportation, who are people who have been with us a long time, and I just wanted to personally say thank you to all of them. And all retirees will be here for the June board meeting, where we can honor them, as well as the top seniors in the senior class. And then finally, I just wanted to say thanks to my two partners here. John is killing himself developing this next budget, and Tasha put together End Service Day on Monday. The number of offers was just incredible. There were so many things for teachers to do, and the teachers are getting so much done with mapping their curriculum, and having the teachers come together across buildings, across grade levels, and work their day with mapping our curriculum. So we're making sure that kids are getting the same program regardless of teacher, regardless of building. If you're in this grade, this is what you get, so that everyone's getting equal preparation going forward. So I just wanted to say thanks to the two of them, and that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Bell. Next, we have an administrative report from our Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Dr. Walkowitz.
Good evening. Just to tag on to what Dr. Bell said, on Monday, we had our final superintendent conference day for this school year. Our math, science, and social studies teachers, who are working with our BOCSE trainers, and our English folks, these are all K-12, worked with Teachers College, and our two literacy specialists, Kim Michael and Fred Hallies, were part of the day to work on their curriculum mapping and integrating best practices into their curriculum maps. And teachers also worked within their core teams to work on continuing their developing curriculum maps units and common assessments. And counselors met with our school attorney for legal updates, and also participated in training for our new student information system, which will be Power School, coming this fall. And our special education support staff had training on integrating augmented speech devices within the classroom. Our CSA staff were trained in handle with care, verbal de-escalation strategies, team building, and trauma-informed communication. Our clerical staff continued with intensive records retention training for BOCSEs and the trainers, but with each of the building and district offices separately, just to go into deeper dive for their records. And they also had their first introductory course for Power School. We also offered additional layers of training for our teachers. We had some, we tried this new thing called pop-up workshops, so teachers could deviate from their curriculum development if they want to go to a specific pop-up session throughout the day, including Power School overview. Foundations are just words, virtual sessions, they could work in teams on that. Asynchronous English language learning strategies workshops, and data literacy workshops held by our two literacy specialists. Finally, our administrative team, they were not exempt from training. They were also trained in our new data dashboard, super excited. I think we had, like, we're just like in awe at what the capabilities could, will be for our teams. It will definitely improve the proficiency and efficiency of our data analysis for students and within our groups of students in the buildings. And last but not least, I want to thank our professional learning committee for their time and ideas to make this day possible, for reaching out to their partners within the buildings and bringing us some cool ideas. I also want to thank our food service technology department and facility staff for their hard work in setting up for the day. They always go above and beyond, so thank you so much. And also, a shout out to our trainers from Model Schools, Power School, BOCSEs, we had two BOCSEs here, Inger Minas Smith and Teachers College, as well as our very own trainers in-house, Chrissy Rota, Justin Karim for our handle with care training, Andrew Rada for our work pride training, Erin Phelan for our food service compliance, community training, and Kim Michael and Brent Hallies for our teacher, Teachers College training and data analysis. And I did send out a survey to all staff, and we had, within one day, we had, I think we probably had seventy responses right now, that's within twenty-four hours, with some really great feedback and ideas to further the work. So thank you so much. If you haven't done yet, please send your feedback to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walkowitz. And next up, we have an administrative report from our Assistant Superintendent for Business, John Tim.
Thank you. So tonight, I'm going to give a budget update. As I've stated before, I'm not going to read through this particular slide, I did it the last time, but I will promise full transparency, maintain fiscal responsibility, align with district goals, and review historical data. So this slide is packed with a lot of information, as you can see it. And I will put this presentation online tomorrow. Tomorrow morning, I'll contact IT, and then we'll post this for you. But if you look, here's two columns, last year's budget and this year's budget. And so I'm really going to focus on the revenue, which is what this slide is about. So highlighted in the middle column is this year's state and federal aid, and that is going off seven point nine million dollars. Most of that is foundation aid. It was a very big year for money. In this budget, I propose that we don't use any appropriations for fund balance, and that we keep our tax levy at the same and go out with another zero. So you can see that on the tax levy line as a zero, which brings our total budget to eighty-nine million, seven seventy-three, six forty-two. So the budget will increase seven point five million without any increase in our taxes, okay? The tax levy will be the same. So there's a lot of, there's a lot in this slide. As you see here, this is the last ten years of budgets. Here's the eighty-nine million, seven seventy-three, six forty-two compared to prior years, up seven point four eight million. That's a nine point one percent budget-to-budget increase. And once again, you can see, looks really impressive there, three zeros in terms of the increase on our tax levy over the last three years. So that's, I don't think there's any district in the state that has done that. I think there's a lot of people that are concerned with the size of this budget and how it's grown over the last ten years. And I can say that the buzz is that this year, there's a lot of money being in there, really, going up seven point nine million dollars. There's some harder times coming in the next couple of years, and I know, I truly believe that the budget's going to level out over the next five years. It's not going to keep increasing this amount. So with that, it'll start petering out because we are in a hospital recession, and if state aid starts leveling off, we are very dependent on aid, and we will, our budget will level off as well. So budget highlights, I will dive into this more in the next presentation, which will be May twenty eighth, excuse me, March twenty eighth. But some highlights is that we are maintaining our programs. Mr. Lozaro talked about college offerings. We are going to expand the college offerings. There's an opportunity to buy new textbooks and new technology. I, once again, will give details of all this in the next presentation. But this is an opportunity with this aid to actually go out and make one-time purchases. So these one-time purchases will be this year, and they'll be removed from the budget's following year. So this is even an opportunity that not only will the budget level up to be the same, it might even be less than it is this year, right? So on January seventeenth, the role of the budget was eighty-four million, seven eighteen, two ninety. Tonight, the current working budget as it is right now, the stated could actually, as it comes in, could be a little different, so this number might be a little different, is eighty-nine million, seven seventy-three, six forty-two. That's how I'm presenting this tonight. What will happen in the upcoming meetings is in March twenty eighth, that budget workshop, once again, I'll delve into the expense side of this, highlight the exact areas where money is going to be allocated. On April twentieth, the board adopts the proposed budget, makes second, there's a public hearing. Voter registration day is May first, at our new building in Pike Street, there's the Times, and there's the budget vote from seven nine on Tuesday, May sixteen. And at this point, we have the budget and the school board elections. Dr. Bell will let us know at some point the additional things that will be on that, and the two locations, Port Jervis High School and HBE. Here's how you can contact me. I'd start with me in terms of questions about this budget. Once again, I'll post this. Any questions, Eve Bellamy, give me a call. Anything related to voter location or voter registration, you can contact Ms. Lopez, and there's her email address. And that's all I have for this evening, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tim. Oh, absolutely, go ahead.
I just wanted to add a few things, something regarding saying, what in the world is driving the revenue side to go up so much in one year? And there's two different things that are going on right now. The first thing is a thing called foundation aid, which is basic state education aid to school districts. And there was a lawsuit that said low-income, high-power schools were being cheated. They were not getting a fair share. And in order to resolve the lawsuit, the state agreed to increase foundation aid significantly for poorer schools, because they knew they were going to lose the lawsuit. And so what has happened over last school year, this school year, and next school year is they're trying to make all poorer school districts whole, getting us up to the aid level that we should have been at probably twenty years ago. So next year, we see that increase of seven or eight million dollars. Part of that is that's the third and final year of getting us up to where we're supposed to be. And then every year, if we get raises after that, say it's three percent because of inflation or whatever, it'll be based on those new higher-level aid to try to equalize, so that we can have opportunities for our kids that wealthier districts can have. The idea is the state makes up the difference, increases your foundation aid. The other thing that's really, the only time ever in my lifetime, or at least in my thirty-one years in education, is this unbelievable amount of federal money that came after COVID. And next year is the third and final year of spending that money. And that was literally millions of dollars that we got from the federal government. We're spending seven million dollars of federal money just on construction projects alone. That's not even in that budget. So you can imagine how much money they sent. So next year is the final year for that. So the state aid is going up, and then each year that they give us big increases, that becomes our new base. The flip side is, the federal money is just all of a sudden going to go poof, and it's gone. So in past recessions, you know, where there was a thing called race to the top when President Obama was in, there's been other things. And what people did wrong then is they used it on their annual expenses. And then when the federal money dried up, and you'll remember, there was President Clinton, there was a hundred thousand new cops on the streets. And what happened to the police departments is that money that, they weaned off after three years, and all the police departments had to fund the money to pay for those coups or layoffs. Same thing with race to the top, with money from President Obama. If you use it on reoccurring expenses, you're going to have a huge hole in a future budget. So what we're doing with that is federal funds, which is about twenty million, three thousand, or something, was about twenty million dollars, is we're using it on construction projects, we're using it on textbooks that'll probably last ten years, we're using it on Chromebooks that'll last at least five years, because we don't want to spend it on annual expenses, because otherwise, you're going to have a huge hole in your budget the following year, and your budget will be a disaster. So all this money is here now, but the foundation aid will level off, the federal money will disappear after next year. So that's just why it went up, and that's what's happening next, is that the federal money will disappear, and we will not get big increases in state aid, foundation aid, after next year's budget. This is the third and final year of big increases. So we have to be really strategic on how to use it, so that you don't create a hole in the next budget that causes astronomical tax increases or huge layoffs, and we don't want either one of those. So that's just some background information on what's going on with all the revenue right now.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bell. Next up on the agenda, we have consent items, and these items include minutes of the January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, board ed meeting, minutes of C P S E meeting, minutes for twelve, twenty-one, twenty-two through two, seven, twenty-three, minutes for C S E meetings for one, ten, twenty-three, one, eleven, one, thirteen, one, seventeen, one, eighteen, one, nineteen, one, twenty, one, twenty-four, one, thirty, and one, thirty-one, twenty-three, two, one, twenty-three, two, three, twenty-three, two, seven, twenty-three. Minutes for C S E meeting, minutes annual review for two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four, for one, thirty-one, twenty-three, two, one, twenty-three, and two, two, twenty-three. Donation, art supply donation from Courtney Bignell to Port Jervis City School District. Treasurer's financial report for January twenty twenty-three. Disposal request, milk cooler for the cafeteria. Disposal request, technology department hardware. I need a motion and a second to approve this consent agenda item. Flow on the motion?
Second.
And Haq on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next on the agenda, we have personnel employment items. These items include retirement instructional staff, position one, three, four, elementary education teacher, June Dawson. Retirement instructional staff, position two, six, five, elementary education teacher, Nancy Northrup. Retirement instructional staff, position three hundred thirteen, special education teacher, Donna Shuts. Retirement support staff, position three hundred eighty-nine, administrative aide, Lynette Davenport. Resignation support staff, position four hundred seventy-eight, teacher aide, Courtney Fuller. Resignation support staff, position five seventy-eight, payroll clerk, Rachel Katz. Resignation support staff, position three oh eight three, school monitor, Diane Kostick. Resignation stipend position, internal auditor, Maria Zinski. Leave of absence. Appointment vacancy, two, four, two, one, co-curricular club advisor, coach intramural, hourly instructional positions for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Appointment support staff vacancy, twenty-four, eighty-five, position three eighty-three, provisional, LMS Electrical. Appointment support staff vacancy, two, four, eight, five, position three eight eight six, provisional, LMS Electrical. Appointment instructional staff vacancy, two, four, nine, two, position two, three, one, temporary, English, teacher leave replacement. Appointment instructional staff vacancy, two, five, oh, seven, position two, three, three, five, temporary, special education teacher leave replacement. Appointment support staff vacancy, two, five, one, one, position five, seven, eight, provisional payroll clerk. Appointment coaching vacancy, two, five, one, two, spring coaches. Appointment coaching vacancy, two, five, one, three, intramural boys volleyball coach. Appointment support staff substitute cleaner. Increase of hours, support staff, position three seventy-five, teacher eight. Increase of hours, support staff, position one, three, six, eight, school monitor. And change in status, professional non-teaching staff, probationary to permanent status, position one sixty-five, registered professional nurse. I need a motion and a second to approve these personnel employment items. Moved by Danny?
Second.
And second by Jason. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Before you go further, I just wanted to say, Chad and Dominic are here tonight. Congratulations both on your appointment. Thanks for joining us.
Next up on the agenda, we have action items. First is action item eight A, Port Jervis City School District, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four student calendar for approval. I need a motion.
I'll hold it.
Bill on the motion? Second by Haq. All in favor to approve the calendar?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next up is item eight B, a resolution, records retention schedule, LGS one. I need a motion to approve. Flow on the motion? I need a second. Jason, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item eight C, signed letter agreement between the Port Jervis City School District Board of Education and the PJCA concerning certain revisions to the collective bargaining agreement. and the PJTA concerning certain revisions to the collective bargaining agreement, appendix B7. I need a motion. Annie, and a second. Haq on the second. All in favor to approve 8C?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carry. Next is item 8D, side letter of agreement between Port Jervis City School District Board of Education and the PJTA concerning certain revisions to the collective bargaining agreement in regard to summer school hiring process. I need a motion and a second for approval. Annie on the motion.
Second.
And Bill, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carry. Action item 8E is policy, first reading, policy numbers 5681, 6121, 6213, 7350, 7522, 7530, and 7619. I need a motion. Moved by Annie. And second by Haq. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Next up, we have board member items, board committee reports. Let's see, anything from buildings and grounds?
No.
Okay. DLT, Bill Harris?
Yes, the district leadership team, we met on February 6th, where we received and reviewed the meeting minutes from all four building education planning teams. We approved all requests, and we made recommendations to all the teams. And we also discussed the amount of money that each team will be budgeted according to student population. And we have no date for our next meeting here.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Flo, anything from Deer Park?
We're quiet, thank you.
Hi.
So slow.
Wow. Annie, anything from Port Jervis?
Yes. Our St. Patrick's Day parade is Sunday, March 5th, at 3 o'clock. And our grand marshal will be hanged up. And also, the snow, we have a snowball, chance, fundraiser, poker ride, and walk. Saturday, March 11th, at 9:00 AM.
Thank you, Annie. Anything from health and wellness? How about policy?
Yeah. We have the policy committee met on Wednesday, and we reviewed a lot of policies and updates. You know I like you. No, I don't. Okay. So we met, and we went over several policies and we updated them and to, and we were very accomplished.
Hi, thank you, Annie, and thank you, Mr. Ron.
I already speak the truth. Right.
Anything from safety? Nancy, Michael, Jason. Michael, Jason. OCSBA bill? And this book? We did meet for the education committee on February 1st. And I, a lot of the things that were discussed at committee were presented here tonight so beautifully by the staff and students who presented. So the only other thing that I wanted to mention was how impressed I was with the discussion surrounding an initiative called Project Lead the Way, which is a nationwide science program, problem-based, problem-based approach, and supports new science standards. And there was a lot of discussion surrounding, you know, an increase of options for college credits. And I was just really impressed with the discussion, as well as the building updates, when they talked about what they were doing in the buildings regarding PBIS and character education. So thank you to all of you who were involved in that for your efforts. And next up, we have board member comments. So I guess we'll start over here and go around this way. Annie, any board member comments?
Yes. The presentation that the administrators gave on that, a lot of the students, I was talking to them, and they loved the involvement and the things that, you know, they can't wait to, you know, what you'll present again. And they love the, yeah, you give them, I guess, money or something, you know, for the education and that. And which is, you know, which is good that we present all this and that. But I love to hear what the students have to say about it. And they're very happy with this. And Connie, I, with your presentation that you give in that, and I respect that. And I feel that the teachers, as being part of the staff and stuff, we are well-trained. And we do, we are well-trained and we, and the students. I do talk to a lot of the students. The students do want me to come and visit the buildings, because I couldn't walk that well with my ankle. I will be coming. And the students are very happy that the students are here, and they feel very safe. And I just wanted to express a thank you.
Thanks, Annie. Bill Harris?
I just wanted to say the presentation was outstanding. And I look forward to many, many years of our secondary buildings working together the way they did tonight, moving us into the future.
Thanks, Bill.
I'd like to reiterate saying that the presentations by the administration was outstanding. It's good to hear all the positive feedback and everybody moving forward in a good direction. So Lozaro, if I ever need somebody to talk real fast, more than, if that message talks in a short amount of time, you're going to be the guy. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike Fluck.
Thank you for all the presentations between the districts. I think it was very nice, very, very informative, very informative. And I take you forward with that.
Thanks, Mike. And Jason?
No, nothing that wasn't said already.
I do want to say, Bill and I attended the Port Jervis Middle School spelling game. And it was nice that, you know, it hasn't been presented in two or three years. And to see the kids and the parents, everybody was happy, you know, without masks. And it was like, they were nervous, but, you know, they got through it. See the upcoming events that will, it's cold.
Great, thank you. And I think Dr. Bell has one more thing to add.
Yeah, I neglected to talk about snow days, the kids' favorite topic, the main of all superintendent's existence, but the kids' favorite topic nonetheless. Just for everybody to know, we've only used two out of seven days. So we're sitting on five. So if, although I did look at the forecast, in the Sunday, Monday, Tuesday that we come back from break, they're forecasting one to three inches every day that week. So enjoy the warmth right now. But nevertheless, not to jinx us. If we continue to have a good deal of snow days, then at the March 14th meeting, I'll be making a recommendation to the board to add Easter Monday to our spring break. And then if we continue to have warm weather in, by the time we get to the April meeting, we'll be looking at the Friday of Memorial Day. So that will take care of four out of the seven. That still leaves three for stuff to happen, and then we'll go from there. If, so don't be sending me your ideas on when we use those other three days, because you will jinx us. It always happens. But that, the first two days we'll use certainly as to add on to those two vacations. Okay?
Thank you. And I too just wanted to say how much I enjoyed the presentation and appreciate all of the efforts by our staff in various schools. There are just so many wonderful things going on. And I also wanted to congratulate the retirees on tonight's agenda. I worked very closely for many years with several people on there. And I just wish you all the best in retirement. Next up, we have dates to remember. We have February 20th through the 24th is President's Week, school is closed. Wednesday, March 1st, Board of Ed candidate petitions are available to the public. Thursday, March 2nd, Port Jervis Middle School Virtual Parent-Student Meet at 7:00 PM. And that's via Google Classroom. Thursday, March 9th, we have ASK's Dr. Seuss Family Night from 6:00 to 7:00 PM in the ASK Cafeteria. Tuesday, March 14th, Port Jervis High School PTSA meeting. That's at 7:00 PM in the high school, room 133. And also, at the same time, 7:00 PM, we have a Board of Education meeting here in the high school cafeteria. Friday, March 24th, Port Jervis Middle School YMCA Meet the Streets program, that's 6:30 to 9:00 PM in the ASK Gym. Friday, March 24th, elementary school's second trimester comes to an end. And a special announcement, candidate petitions for members of the community wishing to run for a seat on the Board of Education will be available to the public on March 1st. You can pick up a petition from the district clerk at the district office located at 115 Pike Street. At this time, can I have a motion and a second after a 10-minute recess to re-enter executive session to continue discussion on items from this evening's 6:00 PM exec session? And there will not be any action taken by the board after executive session. Can I have a motion and a second? Bill, moved by Bill, and second by Flo. Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carry. Thank you all, have a great night.